It's now six thirty, February the eighth. I'd like to call this City of Menneson Council Meeting to Order. I need to point out that there was a initial, there will be an initial proposal here in just a minute from a grant writer. What is this?
That's the positions that we opened on February fifth in the conference room and we're going to conduct interviews after.
Okay. There was a bid opening for propositions of city engineers, CDB, G engineer coordinator, and grant writer for the City of Menneson was held on February the fifth in the rear second floor conference room of City Hall. Further interviews will be conducted with all applicants within a few days. Call the roll, please.
Councilor Chakowski?
Here.
Councilman or councilperson Thomas?
Here.
Councilperson Cosner?
Here.
Councilman Nestor?
President.
Mayor Mosher?
Present.
Mayor, we note four present and one by phone. We noted four.
All right, thank you. I'd like to ask Pastor John Pimp to lead us in prayer.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Father God, we look to you now, and I just trust that within every heart and mind here that we recognize that this providential call and this appointment for which we're both to observe and both to be a part of. And Lord God, we call upon you, asking that as we meet here in Menneson, we're calling to mind your work even in the beginning, when you spoke to the heavens and the earth to be formed, and that your Spirit watched over to make sure that your will was done on earth as it is in heaven. And in the same manner, we trust that your Spirit is here today. And God, we look to you, we're asking for wisdom that we might be able to discern what is of you and what is of any other source, even within ourself, that not our will but your will be done. We ask to that you would give us understanding, that once you have given us not only the appointment, but you would give us the vision, the direction, and the strength of character and of faith to accomplish what you have called us to do. And then, Father, that we would, that you would visit us with knowledge, that we might not only know, but be empowered by the vision to work and to see the opportunities that are set before us, that you've called us from our homes, from our past, from our present, even our comfortable places, that we might do your will on earth as it is in heaven. And Father, we submit ourselves to your rule and your power working within us, both to will and to do according to your good pleasure, confessing with all of our heart, mind, and will, that without you that we can't do nothing, and our efforts are weak. But we know that through our weakness, you can be strong. We ask this for your glory with thanksgiving. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the government for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'd like for somebody to make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session, January the twenty-fifth.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of a previous session of January twenty-fifth, 2024.
Is there a second? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor? Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment on agenda items only.
On this telegraph is twenty-nine recs. I'm kind of humbled that after having a confrontation with the mayor on Tuesday, that I'm placed on the planning commission. I just want you to know I'll do my best because I really advocate a true effort to make Menneson rise. But I'm going to tell you this, if I encounter anyone that has a grudge or has an opinion that negates my efforts, then I'm going to resign. But right now, I accept it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on agenda items? Does anybody have any correspondence that they'd like to bring forth? At this time, I'd like to ask our solicitor for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Tonight's agenda, you will see a motion to adopt the chief of police contract. Worked on that with mayor, council, and chief Uhas. You'll also see a street opening ordinance amendment. This was done in conjunction with a recommendation from the engineer. There was just some inconsistencies that he was seeing with all the utility work going on at the end of last year. We got rid of some of the gray areas within terms of the curb-to-curb restoration. Also on tonight's agenda, you'll see a lease, and I believe you'll be hearing from the groups from the county community action group for the annex building across the corridor here. Just as a reminder, there are demolition hearings the next meeting, January twenty-second at five-thirty PM. That's all I have.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask a city treasurer if he has any report he'd like to give.
Did I say January?
Yes.
It's February.
Yes, I do, Mayor. Mayor, council, and citizens of Menneson, the report for the ending of January 2024. Garbage fees current for January, two hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-two cents. Year-to-date, two hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-two cents. Budget amount for 2024 is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Garbage fees delinquent, January, we collected eight thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars and eighty cents. Year-to-date, eight thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars and eighty cents. Budgeted amount, seventy-five thousand. Amount collected by Portnoy in January, three thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and eighty cents. Year-to-date, three thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and eighty cents. This figure was including the delinquent amounts. Penalty and interest from Portnoy, January, a hundred and fifty dollars and forty-five, forty-six cents. Year-to-date, a hundred and fifty-six, a hundred and fifty dollars and forty-six cents. Budgeted amount, two thousand, five hundred. Garbage fees collected for twenty twenty-five, four, or twenty twenty-four, January, four hundred and eighty dollars. Year-to-date, four hundred and eighty dollars. Budgeted amount, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Total, January, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and ninety-eight cents. Year-to-date, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and ninety-eight cents. Budgeted amount was five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. City real estate taxes revenue, collecting nothing current or year-to-date, budgeted amount was one million, six hundred thousand. City taxes prior to this collected by the city. January, we received twenty-two thousand, forty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. Budgeted amount, or year-to-date, twenty-two thousand, forty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. Budgeted amount, seven thousand dollars. Delinquent city taxes, we collected nothing in January. Budget amount for 2024 is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Total year-to-date taxes collected for gar, for real estate taxes was two, twenty-two thousand, forty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. Budgeted amount, one million, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. City real estate taxes distribution, year-to-date, general fund received fifteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-three cents. Budgeted amount, one million, one hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. Four thousand, six, four thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and five cents for deaf service received. Budget amount, three hundred and two thousand, eight hundred dollars. Libraries fund received, four hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty-one cents. Budget amount, thirty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. Parks received, two thousand, one hundred, two thousand, one hundred dollars and eighty-five cents. Budget amount, a hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. Total year-to-date, twenty-two thousand, forty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. Budgeted amount, one million, six hundred thousand. Real estate transfer tax, January, we received five thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents. Year-to-date, five thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents. Budget amount, eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. Earned income tax, January, we received twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-two cents. Year-to-date, twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-two cents. Budgeted amount, six hundred and eighty-two thousand, forty-eight dollars. Mercantile tax, we saved seventy-nine dollars and six cents. Year-to-date, seventy-nine dollars and six cents. Budget amount, twenty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars. Local service tax, we received, January, three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighteen cents. Year-to-date, three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighteen cents. Budgeted amount, seventy-one thousand, seventy-two dollars. Tax certifications, January, one thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. Year-to-date, one thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. Budgeted amount, twenty thousand dollars. Municipal lien letters, nine hundred dollars. Year-to-date, nine hundred dollars. Budget amount, seven, for 2024, seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars. Line usage account, unsecured payments, fifty dollars in January. Year-to-date, fifty dollars. Line usage fee, eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents. Year-to-date, eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents. Total year-to-date for line usage account, eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. Mayor, that concludes my report for the month, month in, uh, January 2024.
Mayor, break into the treasurer's report for garbage real estate taxes for the budget January 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor? Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to ask our city controller for her report.
Thank you, Mayor. The general fund, Charleroy Federal Savings Bank checking account, the reconciliation as of January thirty-first, 2024. The beginning bank balance as of December thirty-first, 2023, was three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-one cents. Deposits made, six hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty cents. Expenses, eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-three cents. The ending balance as of January thirty-first, 2024, was a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-eight cents. Outstanding checks, fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. Outstanding deposits, two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty-one cents. The reconciliation bank balance to the bank statement was a hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and four cents. That concludes my report.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask our Westmoreland Community Action Group to come give us a presentation about a potential for a welcome center in the annex building across the way.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone. My name is Dan Juvenelli. I'm with Westmoreland Community Action.
If you stand in front of the speaker, it'll be a problem.
Sorry. I'm usually too loud for microphones, but appreciate your time tonight. Just want to talk a little bit about how a plan we may have for the annex across the courtyard here. We serve, we're a human service provider. We serve all across Westmoreland County. Our main office is in Greensburg, and for too many years, we have said things like, we would love to be there to serve and support you. Why don't you come to Greensburg? That doesn't work, right? And we know that hasn't been working for lots of the folks we work with. So we're working real hard to put offices back in the communities, Menneson being high on our list. So for some time now, we've been looking for some space that would be a good fit in Menneson. We just walked through, some of our team had been in a couple times. I think this is going to be an outstanding opportunity. We're going to call, we want to call this a welcome center, right? And this is a place that folks who may need some help, may need some support, can come in and meet with our staff, with, work with our staff, and we'll be able to provide emergency services, food, hygiene items, warm clothing in the winter, that sort of thing. But also, in some ways, more importantly for the long term, work with folks and talk with folks, meet them where they are literally, right? And figure out how we can help support over the long term. So whether it's something that maybe we can help with, or one of the outstanding community groups or churches you have in town can help with, it's really hard sometimes for folks to walk in the right door. You know, we know three of the hardest words in the English language are, I need help. And too often, our neighbors, who have the greatest need and are most vulnerable, finally have to say, I need help, and somebody says to them, oh, you came to the wrong place. You got to call so-and-so over there. Oh, you got to go to that office over there. You got to drive to Greensburg to do that thing. So I'm not saying we're going to get it right on day one, but that's what we're looking to fix. Too often, those of us on this end who are seeking to serve go eh, slip between the cracks like that's some act of God, but it's not. Right? It's a system that we made and we can work on doing better at. So what we want to be able to do with this is create that place anybody can walk into, and maybe there's something we can do right then, maybe there's not, but we're not going to say, no, call so-and-so. We'll walk with you on that to help figure out what way we can support folks wherever they are. So this can mean a variety of things, and it will change over time as we understand better what folks in the community need and how we can partner with the churches and the community organizations already here. On the front end, what we're talking about is putting some staff down here, doing food, emergency food distributions when it's necessary. You have some great food bank distribution sites already in town, but that's something we can never have too much of, right? You know, make it as easy as possible for folks to walk in, have those kinds of supplies on hand, have staff on hand. We work a lot with youth and young adults in Westmoreland County who are experiencing homelessness. We have a whole bunch of dedicated staff and resources to help. This is teenagers, really like sixteen-to-twenty-five-year-olds I'm talking about here. And there's way too many folks, period, but way too many folks in this age range. So we're also hoping to put some staff to work on, with these clients, specifically young adults, and work on things like that. So have a place where a young adult or a teen can drop in, can just stop in after school hours and find some support. Find somebody that will listen and talk to them and care about what they're experiencing. And I'm not saying we're going to fix it right that second, but having somebody that'll talk to you, that cares about you, and will listen to what you're experiencing is a big step in the right direction, and it's a big first step. Then hopefully, we're going to find all kinds of other cool stuff to do. As a teaser, we're looking at a program now that we've been talking to some of our state funding partners on. It's for, it's for folks that are in recovery from substance use addiction, and what some of the research they were looking at tells us is if we build really strong networks for folks, they're way less likely to start using again, right? And that kind of makes sense, right? If you have people to support you, everything goes better. And as it turns out, one of the cool ways some folks are doing this is with little small fitness centers. They come work out in our gym, and we're going to have a group of folks who've experienced some similar stuff as you. And then we're going to have resources there and folks to talk to if you want, but make some friends, folks that are experiencing similar stuff, help support each other. So we're crossing our fingers, if the money comes through on that, I don't know, maybe it won't, but that's one example. And what we're really excited to do is have folks here every day, and I live up in Crabtree, and I drove down. I don't know a lot about Menneson. I don't know as much as I should, and I'm not the face somebody wants to see walking in because I'm not here, right? But that's what we've learned, and that's what we know. We want folks that are here, right? We want neighbors. We want folks walking around town that you're going to run into at the coffee shop, and that's what we're looking for as we have staff here and have, have an office here. Neighbors, right? Serving each other, lifting each other up together. Okay? So i, if this makes sense, I hope it makes sense. I'd love to have some questions. I'd love to talk to folks, but we're really hoping this is a nice fit. I'm going to wrap up my stick real fast, sorry. I'm hoping this is a nice fit. The building looks like there's tons of opportunities. We're super excited about even more of a partnership with Menneson. Menneson's been a great partner for us. We have some other projects and other programs already running in town, and I think that could be a great place we can help anchor as a community resource, so us and other organizations and the church community and everybody can kind of work together and use that as a, as a great community resource. Sorry, sir, yes, what was your question?
Menneson is way at the end of Westmoreland County. What happens when the disadvantaged people come from Charlotte or another county? You going to tell them, go over there?
No, sir.
So you going to take care of them here in Menneson?
For the most part. Sometimes there's weird rules about money and where the money comes from, but a lot of our funding, we serve people where they are. So you walk in the door in Menneson, for the most part, we'll be able to provide services. There's a couple weird ones, but for the most part.
Is it Westmoreland County tax money to pay for people from out of town?
Sorry, I was unclear. So usually, when it's Westmoreland County money, that's the exception. Most of our funding is not Westmoreland County money. We have some, of course, but it's state or federal funds that cover the broader region.
So eighty percent of the folks that show up are from out of town?
There is, we'd be real surprised, and there's a really, really boring process when we have that thankfully, the folks we serve never have to see, but we lose our hair about on the back end, that figures out what dollar is allowed to do what. And we have funding streams from, I don't know, fifty-five or sixty different funders at any given time, covering loads of different programs. It's tricky, but it's something we sort out in all of our programs across the area.
Two more questions.
Yes, sir.
What if illegals show up? You going to take care of them?
We serve in whatever way is legal for an individual program.
Okay, so illegals show up, you're going to run that through the money?
We, every level of government and all the different funding sources have different rules. So for example, no matter who shows up and they say they're hungry, yes, we provide food.
Okay, and then one last question. You going to be paying rent to the City of Menneson?
Yes, sir. I believe the lease that we negotiated, and we have some details to finalize, is seven hundred dollars a month.
And you going to pay all the expenses?
Yeah, we have a lease that we've been, our solicitor and the city solicitor have been working on.
Utilities, everything?
Mm-hmm.
Is it on top of the building?
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
You say you're coming to Menneson, you're looking for a place to, you're going, and what is the picture looking?
The, the annex building right across the courtyard.
What's wrong with the civic center? That's a place where you, there are everything, you know? And you don't have to put two people in Menneson to live in the building. They know the civic center is, and they know what they did. And basically, normally, they came with young kids between the ages of fourteen to twenty-five, and they also get help there. There's a kitchen already in it. So they just, they just refurbished the building itself, and there's offices in it. Can I just see why they didn't take it there?
We actually did show that, that place. It did not have enough office space. It did not have enough office space.
Yeah. I can't say, I looked at them personally. One of our staff, Alex behind you, has been looking all over town for some, for, for a little while, and like, like any tenant, we have a whole variety of needs, right? And this is something that seems to fit.
It's not the one of their places where they take you to, to make the long damn place.
I appreciate you looking out. We've looked at a number of places. We're comfortable with this and think it's going to be an outstanding opportunity to build another community anchor. Sounds like the civic center already is. And how nice will it be to have something else right next to City Hall and more activity in the courtyard and folks coming and going, some more jobs in town, and another opportunity to serve our neighbors. Absolutely. We'll run a bunch of advertising all over town, helping explain the services, the hours, that kind of thing, and we already have staff starting to attend more community meetings, but part of it is just getting folks out there. Nothing works, billboards are great, right? But nothing works like going out and talking to people. I'm right around the corner. They're great, except for when they started shooting off fireworks at every wedding. We have horses, and I'll tell you, the horses do not enjoy it as much as the wedding party does, but it makes Friday and Saturday nights a little more exciting in Crabtree. They were great the first time, then we're out there, I'm like, I hope they know it's the same ones every time, right? You don't get special fireworks. Everybody gets the same fireworks as their horses run around.
So what's your tender favor moving in?
I don't have that offhand. We got to get that lease, and there's always the insurance and all of the boring paperwork, but we have staff ready and waiting to go. We have furniture and refrigerators and all that kind of stuff ready and waiting to go. We'll have all of the normal boring stuff getting ready to move and a little bit of paint and fixing some stuff up and making everything's good, so soon, certainly this spring. Yes, sir. It depends. We'll work with the food bank and the other partners that do distribution, so all of our sites, we keep emergency supplies on hand, and then we'll assess what the need is, what the food bank is seeing in their numbers, and whether or not we'll do a regular distribution. Our main office in Greensburg, for example, does a large monthly distribution, a very sizable distribution. Some places, it's just emergency supplies. It's quite possible the food bank's going to tell us there's enough regular distribution going out and there's not a need for that, but an extra play, emergency supplies are always, always, always necessary. So that's the baseline, and then grow from there based on what the, what the need is.
You know, like basically, like normal operations, Monday through Friday, eight to four, eight to five, something like that?
Yeah, that's the goal, and that's going to vary on staffing, or us, like everybody else, having our staffing challenges. So we won't be at the staffing point we hope to eventually be at on day one, but we have a dedicated staff member ready to go, and we're, we're opening several satellites across the county. So the goal is eventually to have several dedicated staff that are the Menneson people. That, that's a big part of it. It's not a stranger you're walking into. It's hopefully somebody you've run into on the street. There you go. But then also, you know, we have all kinds of service areas and experts in all kinds of things, and what's nice about that is as those folks are needed, they can come and help out. And, oh, we're seeing this kind of need. We have some folks that work normally in Greensburg, but we need them down here for, you know, whatever, right? And, and a lot of it will be driven by, once we build out and are here more, what we're hearing from the community and what there's a need for. And we haven't had that kind of wider presence in Menneson for a while. We've had Star Classroom still in Menneson, but years ago, we had an office down here and we haven't in a number of years, so we're excited to have an office again, like a really easy, obvious one, is we run volunteer income tax clinics. We have a handful of them across the county. Week one, we filed, I just got the report today, a hundred and thirty-three returns in, which means two, nearly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal returns coming back to low-income residents. We don't have a clinic in Menneson right now. We didn't have the staffing and the space and all of those things. Fingers crossed, next year, we'll have a free income tax clinic right there. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Love to have it back. Lots of rules about those, but we'll get there. But, but hopefully we'll get there. Yes, sir.
Is there an organization like a crisis center, say something occurs in the family that, uh, would, would get involved in that?
At times. It depends on the details. Devil's always in the details, right? So we operate the mental health crisis hotline for Westmoreland County. So this dispatches, if you dial nine-one-one and describe a mental health emergency, they'll transfer to our folks. Or you can call in directly to our crisis line and talk to somebody twenty-four hours a day. Then when there's a need and a crisis, we also dispatch a mobile team anywhere in Westmoreland County to help support, uh, on mental health crisis. So often these folks will go out with law enforcement when there's an issue. Law enforcement helps handle the security and the safety and our folks help support the individuals that might be experiencing a crisis. Um, so there's that type of crisis intervention and then a whole variety of our services deal with all kinds of the crises that life throws at us.
Good luck. I hope you get a touch with the right people. Lots of people that are just, just.
Thank you, sir. We like talking to everybody.
I, I will give you my telephone number, please.
Yes, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have cards?
Yes.
I have a handful. I'm the worst about picking up cards, but I grab a couple.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take it.
I just gave away my whole stack.
We don't need all of these.
She's not the keeper.
How many you got?
Three, four. I picked up a small stack, sorry.
All right. Well, let's see, this, uh, been a busy couple of weeks. One of the things that, uh, this listener and myself did is we worked with Portnoy. Portnoy is the people that, uh, we turn over the garbage collection to. And it's a, it's a very powerful group. It's mostly lawyers and their way of going after garbage is pretty brutal, but that's what they do. The point being is we have a lot of garbage bills that just are difficult to collect. And, uh, we've been talking with council and so forth, the, about the thought of coming up with a plan for somewhat of an amnesty program where we can collect the principal and maybe part of the, uh, the, uh, legal expenses, but a great reduction in the interest and penalties that has normally been associated with that. It'll be limited to certain years. It'll be limited and it's still gotta be, all the details have to be worked out, but we started the, the process of discussing that. Tuesday of this week, I held a meeting with, uh, several business people in Mineson, including the luminous horse Cliffs, the, the school system superintendent, his place, the restaurants and so forth. And, uh, the, the purpose of this vision is to come up with the concept of what are we gonna do with this lot across the street here? And we're talking about maybe coming up with a micro, a micro, um, hospital, something that has eight to fifteen beds. So we'll be soliciting the local hospitals around, trying to encourage them to come invest in Mineson to accomplish that. Also, um, on the fifteenth, I'm gonna have another one of my infamous town hall meetings. It'll be primarily to talk about what the vision was and how that, that came to be and who, who's participating and so forth, but also have the, uh, state-of-the-city message at that time, too. So anybody that wants to come on that day, that's what we'll be doing then.
What time?
Six, six-thirty, Wednesday evening. With that said, I've got some motions here. If, uh, somebody'd like to read them for me?
We'd like to make a motion to approve sewer rehabilitation project phase three. Payment requisition certificate number fifteen for work performed by M C S P, Inc., during the month of January twenty twenty-four, in an amount of one million, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty-two cent. The invoices are attached for approval by the councils of this agenda and are referenced as exhibit one.
Is there a second? Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor? Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve sewer rehabilitation project phase three. Payment requisition and certificate number fifteen for work performed by W C, Inc., during the month of January twenty twenty-four, in an amount of forty-six thousand, seventeen dollars and sixty-eight cent. The invoices are attached for approval by the council to this agenda and are referenced as exhibit two.
Is there a second? Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to return a penalty payment paid on real estate taxes due to a billing and mailing error to Ms. Sandra Davis of fourteen hundred Harrison Street, Mineson, P A, one five zero six two, in an amount of two hundred dollars and five cent.
Is there a second? Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to accept the resignation of David Dorashevics from the City of Mineson Police Force effective February fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second? Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to provide a conditional offer of employment to Ryan Bartolomew as a police officer in the City of Mineson. Mineson with employment beginning the first day of scheduled work in the City of Mineson.
Is there a second? Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye, sorry.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve a memorandum of understanding between the City of Mineson and the Office of the County of Westmoreland Office of District Attorney relative to contemporaneous recording of police interactions with members of the general public, an objective and transparent record of the encounter. Attached this agenda as exhibit three.
Is there a second? Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to permit advertising for the position of city clerk in the City of Mineson with the position to be filled on or about April first, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Comments, please.
You, comments would be at the end of the meeting.
In regards to this motion?
This is a council decision.
Okay.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve the renewal of a contract of employment for Police Chief David Uhas as chief of the City of Mineson Police Department.
Is there a second? Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Ernest Telegraphis to a four-year term on the Mineson Planning Commission commencing February eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second? Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Julian Naveer to a two-year term as a Young Adog representative on the Youth and Citizens, Young Youth and Young Citizens Board to commence on February eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second? Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Teresa Say to a two-year term as the education representative on the Young Youth and Young Citizens Board to commence on February eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second? Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Marsha Adams to a two-year term as the education representative on the Youth and Young Citizens Board to commence on February eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second? Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Linda Carson to a two-year term as the, as the at-large member of the Youth and Young Citizens Board to commence on February eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second? Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve payment to Urban Design Ventures for basic planning consulting services for the four-month period from September first, twenty twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three for technical services provided for the city C D B G program to supplement the city staff in an amount of nineteen thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. This includes providing one hundred and twenty-eight hours of services during the four-month period. The specific, the specifics of the invoice are attached to this agenda as exhibit four.
Is there a second? Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve the movement of the tax anticipation note, TAN note funds into separate TAN note account under the general fund account and to authorize the first movement of funds into the general account from the TAN note account in an amount of seventy-five thousand dollars.
Is there a second? Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve a lease between the City of Mineson and Westmoreland County Community Action to lease space in the five fifty-seven Annex Building at a monthly rate of seven hundred dollars per month, contingent on approval of the agreement by the solicitor of the City of Mineson. Attached to this agenda as exhibit five.
Is there a second? Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve an ordinance of the City of Mineson, County of Westmoreland, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending chapter three forty Streets and Sidewalks by repealing certain provisions of Article One openings and excavations related to deposits and barns and resurfacing requirements. Attached to this agenda as exhibit six.
Is there a second? Any questions?
Question. So what was changed? Do, I mean, do we no longer require from current curb to be based on the original materials?
Councilman Nestor, that was the issue. There were some utilities late last year that were questioning the accuracy of the ordinance. So Tony Vitell and W C Engineers took a look at it, pointed out a few areas that I agreed with that would clarify that to make sure that the utilities understand the restoration standards.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to award bid on a Crescent Street sewer extension project, M O N dash twenty twenty-four dash zero one, to the lowest responsible bidder, Jet Jack, Inc., based upon their unit bid price at seventy-four thousand, fifteen dollars.
Is there a second? Is there any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Discussion and potential motion regarding either reimbursement of the general fund relative of valid line usage expenditures occurring from October twenty-third through December twenty twenty-third, or to utilize the funds of repayment of line usage borrowing pursuant to resolution number two of twenty twenty-three.
Let me just take a, is there a second?
No, no motion yet.
Okay, just, okay. Well, let me just take a moment to explain what's going on here. There is a line usage account that we owe money for this, and I say we as in the city owes money to. This is from prior administrations that incurred debt by borrowing money without properly recording it from the line usage account. We have made payments to that since, uh, last year when we passed a resolution. We made payments to the tune of about eighteen thousand dollars, a little over eighteen thousand dollars. The resolution basically says we pay two thousand dollars, two thousand, thirty dollars and seventy-two cents every quarter. So we've overpaid what we're supposed to be paying to this line usage account according to the resolution that we did to, to pay back this loan. The point being is now we have about thirteen thousand dollars of money that was spent in October, November, and December of last year on operating the street sweeper and the VAC truck. So that thirteen thousand dollars came out of the, the general fund. This is like a, let's make a deal with three doors. There's three things we can do. We cannot do the wrong thing. Every one of them is a positive thing. Door number one is we can take that thirteen thousand dollars out of the line usage account and put it in the general account. That helps us reduce the amount of money that we're going to be drawing on our TAN note, just as an example. Door number two says we're going to pay that money into the line usage account. We're just going to prepay it and we'll pay it off a little bit earlier, several years earlier, because that's another six months of, or excuse me, six quarters or two and a half years of a prepayment that that would amount to. Or door number three is we don't do anything. We just let it sit there. Treat it like a savings account. We'll continue operating the street sweeper. We'll continue operating the VAC truck throughout the year. That thirteen thousand dollars will grow to seventy or eighty thousand dollars by December of this year. And then we can have the choice of making this decision of how we want to handle that money. So there's three ways we can do this, and I'm going to leave it up to council what they would suggest that we do with this. Does anybody have something for door number one?
Yes, but door number three might be the best option.
Okay.
And we, I agree, we're, we're okay now financially. Thirteen grand. Huh? Oh. Thirteen, was it thirteen?
A little over thirteen thousand dollars currently. It'll, it'll grow immensely over the course of the year.
I say leave it. That's my opinion until the end of the year. Let it ride.
Okay. It's a savings account. We can draw upon it anytime we want to, so.
We're getting interest, so why shouldn't we use it?
We're making interest and we can use it.
Exactly.
Okay. Does anybody want to second such a motion?
There doesn't need to be. Okay.
You like option three as well? I tend to, I, I tend to too, but. So, so like to make a motion then to, to actually not make a motion. We don't want to do anything with this money.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to ask. That money's just there.
It's just there.
Don't need to.
We don't need to, to do anything. So we'll move on then. Thank you.
No, because there was no motion presented.
No, no, presented, yes, okay.
Very good.
Motion to reimburse the grant fund four hundred dollars from the general fund for civil service testing within the City of Manassas.
Is there a second? Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to pay Terry Planton from the grant fund for services rendered on grant writing activities in an amount of six hundred dollars.
Is there a second? Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes. Well, that was interesting, and we had three letters left in the alphabet.
I'm sure we could have used them.
Tony, would you like to give us your report from Director of Campus Finance?
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the general fund in the amount of forty-three thousand, seven hundred and three dollars and twenty-one cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment A.
Is there a second? Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the rec account in the amount of one thousand, sixty-two dollars, thirty-eight cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment B.
Is there a second? Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the parks fund in the amount of one thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty-six cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment C.
Is there a second? Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the line usage account of the amount of twelve thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eighty cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment D.
Is there a second? Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve the transfer of eighty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-four cents from the general fund to the payroll account to cover payroll expenses.
Is there a second? Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
And mayor, these are the balances in the accounts. ARP fund has two hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and twenty-three cents. Parks has forty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixteen cents. Healthcare has three thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and forty-five cents. Debt service has eight hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Rec fund has five thousand, fifty dollars and forty-eight cents. Fire escrow has twenty-one thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars and three cents. Grant fund has fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety-six cents. Payroll has thirteen thousand, twenty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents. Line usage has seven hundred and seventy, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty-six cents. Refuge account has three hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and one dollar and twenty-six cents. Liquid fuels has two thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. The general fund has sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and nine cents, and the TAN note has a balance of four hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents. And mayor, that's my report.
Thank you very much. At the end. Lois, would you like to give us your report?
If I may, mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to defer the reading of the Streets and Public Improvement Report for the month ending January thirty-first until our next meeting on February twenty-second.
Thank you. John, do you have anything you'd like to report from public safety? Thank you. Karen, do you have anything you'd like to report on?
No, I would like to defer my report, but I do have one announcement. Can I make it?
Certainly.
It's a good one.
Good.
I was asked by the senior center to let everybody know that they're going to have assistance to complete the property tax and rent rebate applications at their center on March twenty-sixth and April twen, April third. And there have been some really good changes. So I have a few flyers if you'd like to have one before you leave, and I'll post one here. We're hoping to have those rent rebate forms here, and they will also be at the library. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment on any item relating to business, ordinance, statutes, resolutions, or daily work product and the attention of the City of Manassas.
Ted Harhi Helen Avenue. I have a relatively quickie. The health center that's been vacant for seven years, Christiane Suthan Theran, actually dug up the paper when I went and said this was a scam. Seven years later, it's still a scam. He's done nothing. If one woman that goes in there at nine comes out at twelve, goes back in at one and goes out at three, he said he's going to put manufacturing in there. It's not a manufacturing building. Can we do anything, and unfortunately, young Delfonso was involved when they reduced the taxes from a hundred and seventy-seven thousand to fifty-four hundred after they fought to get it on the tax rolls, which made absolutely no sense at the time, and convinced the school board to do the same, to vote for it. They went to court, and you were there. Is there something we can do to tax this guy, or re-tax this guy, or get him off his butt? He did the same thing at Brownsville General Hospital. Mavrekas was well aware of it at the time. Council was well aware of it at the time. It caused Lucille Delfonso to resign, move out of Manassas, and move out of the state. We have lost a ton of money tax-wise. The biggest chunk of money goes to the school. Second is us. Third is the county, which I'm not overly concerned with. But, um, one, you preach trustworthiness, you, you preach truthfulness, and you preach transparency, and you're oh-for-three. And number two, I think you need to take a page out of the Chalaway Borough Book now, and Enor, that are really transparent and exposing a lot of things that are what I would term underhanded. Can we do anything to Christiane Suthan Theran? All you had to do was Google him. He was tried by the grand jury and Canada lost, appealed that, and he owes a hundred and thirteen million dollars to Belgium for toxic nuclear medical waste, which he got a, a petition to the state to try to put it down in those garages or whatever you want to term them, by the health center. We, we got to do something. It's a four-story building. I know that the big thing was twenty-seven percent was owned by the state. That's why they, they wanted me to get out of there, because I didn't ever approve that, to, to drop the twenty-seven percent ownership. It's terrible. It's a double standard here. Same thing happened when you bid on the city building on Third and Donner. Nothing happened because Marty Dude has got the bid. We had people that wanted to go in, and, um, Delfonso's boss put a condemn sticker on it. I talked with Pastor Tim, and he, he called the state. He said that building was never condemned, which we all knew was never condemned. But why is it good for some and not good for others? And what made me come to the meeting, which I wasn't, you probably would have been happy, is the crap that this paper put in there, and the, not the visionaries. I, I'm glad if they're hopefully going to try to move ahead. But let's tell the truth. I mean, you can't lie and have them swear by it, and that's what's happening. And it's terrible for all the people, and the people of the City of Manassas need to know what's going on. Can I get an answer on the health center for seven years and nothing being done?
I'll let the solicitor address that, but to the best of my knowledge, he's paying the taxes as private property.
And fifty-four hundred dollars. It's ridiculous.
Well, but he's still paying it. It's what it is.
How that happened, there was a tax appeal in court. The school district hired an appraiser. That number, at least from what I can recall, was what the school district's appraisal said the value was.
Okay, the appraisal on the building was one million empty?
That's not what the school district's appraisal was.
I don't care what the school district said. I know what we did in the city.
You're talking about the CBRE appraisal that was outdated.
No, it wasn't outdated. It was one million upfront with nothing in the building and one point nine if it was filled.
I'm telling you what happened in the courtroom.
Well, I'm telling you that this was all set up beforehand, and that's why that building was sold. To stop, we had businesses ready to go in there.
If you want to answer to the question, let her talk.
Yeah, but he's got to tell the truth.
I am telling the truth. Go look at the docket, Ted. Go look at the docket. The school district hired an appraiser. They set the number. The owners agreed to it. That's what happened.
What, what owners agreed to?
The owners of the building agreed to what the school district's number said in the appraisal.
Christiane Suthan Theran.
Correct.
Why would he not, why would he not agree? He reduced his taxes from one hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars to fifty-four hundred?
The court reduced it.
Well.
The court reduced it.
You guys went after, you guys here in the city and the school districts was conned into doing it, and too he was the solicitor. I remember when it all went down.
John, too, he was the solicitor. He was in the court.
And I know the people who were there in addition to yourself in the courtroom.
He had an appraisal. The school district spent money on an appraisal.
Yes, just like, it was appraised down in Marla Hill for two hundred thousand dollars. Is that a correct appraisal?
So I don't know who the appraiser was, but if you're saying an appraiser is an independent body who...
The city got the appraisal. Lou Mavrekas said the guy said two hundred thousand dollars.
The city did not submit the appraisal in that tax appeal. The school district did.
Well, no, that was, the initial appraisal was two hundred thousand, then.
Correct.
Why would, why would, sight unseen, I'll never forget it. Christiane Suthan Theran bid. Did the same thing to Brownsville Hospital.
Has nothing to do with the tax appeal.
Brownsville Hospital, nothing.
Has nothing to do with the tax appeal. You asked about the tax appeal, and you're wrong.
Yeah, I am not wrong.
I will show you the docket.
Show it to me.
I will. I'll bring it next meeting.
Mr. Harhi?
Yes.
I will agree with you. We got to do something with that building or force them to do something. You're a hundred percent right there.
I appreciate it. I don't, you know, I'm not, the thing is, it's ridiculous what he got away with, just like he gets away with every place he goes. And he was recruited to put, I don't even know if he put the money up himself to, to buy the building. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I just want to add a couple of things. One, the city's council approved, given the deed of the building to the Indian guy when he didn't even pay for the whole price. You only paid a deposit, and you guys gave him a depo, uh, the deed.
That was a prior administration, which we had nothing to say about that.
What do you mean you got nothing to say? If somebody commits a crime, you got nothing to say about it.
It's not.
We're moving forward. Let's not do the same thing again.
Exactly. I agree with that one hundred percent. Let's not do things the way that have been in the past.
Okay, so let's go forward now to the present. This dream team that you got, and it's in the paper, like, visionaries, okay? Two-thirds of them don't got a brain. It's a clique, and all those people that are in there are gimme, gimme. What do you expect to get from Pastor Tim? What do you expect to get from Douglas School?
All of those people are successful in Manassas.
How successful? They, they, they got the building for a dime a dozen. That's how they're successful.
All the people that, that were there, they employ well over about three hundred people.
Where was three hundred people? Where at?
Well, there's a hundred and seventy-five across the river here, uh, there. You got, I've got people at alumni sorts. You got people at this one. You got people at the restaurant.
Across the river. This is Manassas.
Across the railroad tracks. Excuse me.
Look, the big thing is this. You don't spell out. What are you going to do with that building over there? It's a secret until you guys execute the deed.
I want a micro hotel, a micro hospital over there.
The hospital, the sixth floor's been closed for two years, and there was so much in the red that the, the other hospital corporation bought them out. It's no longer the Mont Valley Hospital. They were bought out. So you're going to put a micro thing to do what? To do what? What are you going to do? We got all kind of different satellites, like the emergency clinics, and you go to Ross Traver, Emergency Med and all that stuff. And you're going to put a micro to do what? What are you going to micromanage? What are you going to micromanage?
Well, first off, we have two economic zones right here in downtown Manassas that have extremely high poverty rates.
Okay, so we're going to live to spend all our money on the low-class people who don't produce nothing? And the people who bust their ass, the middle class, we're going to jump on their backs to pay for this, pay for that.
The people in the middle class are aging in this town, and they also need healthcare.
Yeah, they're aging, and you guys ain't bringing anybody new here except poverty people. They're all poverty people. The new ones are coming in.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Well, what do you mean thank you? You guys don't want to debate that. The thing is, why don't you spell out to the taxpayers?
I just did.
What? What, what kind of micromanage? You just gave me a label. How's that going to function? And how's that going to bring money to the Manassas?
It's a long way from being there. We've got to develop.
Yeah, it's a long way until you guys cook everything underneath, and then you spring it on the public, and then you have the newspapers endorsing it, and then you guys would say, second motion, third motion, fourth. That's how you run the city.
Okay, so let's do things your way, and just sit there and argue about it and stifle any development that we do here in Manassas.
Do you know what I propose? To bring something in here, to bring families from all over? Yeah. But you guys are carrying baggage from the clique. But anyway, I want to go one more thing here. Can you tell me what the total is that you end up? You guys give all these fragmented numbers. Adam, where does Manassas stand as of January thirty-first? How much money do we have? Just give me that.
In all the accounts?
Yeah, all the accounts. Where do we stand?
Two point eight million dollars.
Two point eight, okay. Now, I'm going to ask you, Mr. Saxon, you're the treasurer. How much money passed in your hands in January? Did you come up with two point four million, did you say? Eight, two point eight? Because if we got an imbalance, then we got something wrong here.
That wasn't money that came in this month. That was money that we've accumulated over the years.
I just asked him how much he got.
Yeah, we accumulated that money over years.
Okay, how much did he go through?
Every penny of that went through the Treasury Department.
The thing is, you guys don't balance that.
We balance it.
You're like a parrot, give a number, and people don't know what's going on.
There is an audit that came through today. They spent the last three days gathering data. They will be back after tax season, last week of April.
We want transparency. We want transparency. We don't want verbal.
There will be an audit here that will be completed towards the end of April, and that will be presented to everybody, and you will see exactly all, where all the money is and how it came to be.
Yeah, the audit's going to be by the same crew, and he's called Cypher and Cypher.
They are credited CPA.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so what could you tell us, Jerry? I'm not putting the heat on you. I'm just trying to see the wisdom of this council.
Total real estate taxes. Ending December twenty-third. December twenty-twenty-three came to two million, two hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy-one cents.
And this is for what month?
That's for the year.
Oh, for the year. What about for the month? Just, uh, January?
January? January this past year, I just gave it to you.
You didn't give me a total. You gave us bits and pieces.
Yes, I did give you a total, Ernie.
Okay, what was it then?
Wait till I find out what year it is.
You realize tax bills didn't go out for this year yet, right? They go out in March for twenty twenty-four.
You do realize. January this year, twenty-two thousand, forty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. That was real estate taxes. Garbage?
That was prior year.
That was prior year. Thank you.
No, that was for Jan.
January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
That was for January. That's a weekend brought in. Twenty-two thousand, forty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. Garbage fee we brought in for January, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and ninety-eight cents.
That's not a cumulative, right? That's only for January?
That's for January.
Okay. So do they balance?
How in God's name would you get them to balance when some of this stuff is left over?
I want to.
Where did you go to school from at?
Listen.
No, you, no.
No, no, no. We're asking simple questions.
No, you asked a simple question. I'm going to give you a simple answer.
They don't balance. That's all I know.
No kidding, Sherlock.
Yeah.
We're two hundred and forty, two hundred and ten dollars, two hundred and ten thousand dollars that is part of that two point eight is from ARP money, which we've had for a couple of years. Jerry would not have seen it. He would have nothing to do with it. Okay, debt services.
Your figures don't have that.
I don't have those figures.[1597.11]
Well, we don't know that because you guys don't make it clear.
Yes, I did. I'll tell you what your county collects.
Together. Well, all I wanna know is, are you gonna be able to make it through the whole year?
With January?
Huh? I mean, you gotta pretend. Well, I mean, we're gonna bring these figures. We don't know where we stand.
Did we make it through last year?
Yeah.
Did we make it?
By the skin of your teeth.
Three hundred thousand dollars?
Listen, in November, you said you were two hundred ninety-five thousand in the red. And then December, I guess Santa Claus came by and gave you two hundred some thousand plus.
Ernie, Ernie.
What?
Surprise.
What? There was Santa Claus?
Yeah, there was things that came in. God almighty. I need a bigger prayer.
Peanut, forty-five one Traver, one five oh sixty. I got a couple of questions, Tony.
You know, I'm trying to understand this, okay? Say, whenever the sewage program here, you know, the water, what they're doing right now in the city?
The sewage project?
Yeah. When they do the billing, it goes from the engineering company or NJ, one of the two, to the city?
No.
From the city? How's it go? Tell me how it goes.
It's a stink, doesn't it?
No. That money is collected by our sewage authority and monthly they take the twenty-seven dollars that they accumulate from everybody. They take out a percentage that they keep. I think it's eight percent, fifteen percent.
How's the bill work? Once they bill you, where's it going, how it process until?
So, so they, they give us a check and this month it was eighty-seven thousand dollars according to what we.
Who gives you a check?
The sewage authority gives the city a check for eighty-seven thousand dollars.
We have a fifty million dollar line from the bank.
Well, let me finish. So that eighty-seven thousand dollars is the month for money they collected for January. It averages, well, about a million dollars a year that they give us over the course of the year. That goes into the line usage fee, line usage money account. Some of that money is disturbed, is distributed to the debt service account for the USDA loan. Some of it goes to Penn Vest to pay the Penn Vest loan. In the end, we are collecting roughly twice as much money as is required to pay all the loans, roughly.
Well.
That was used for doing the projects like we did today, ninety-one thousand dollars for a cress.
Just listen. I don't wanna hear your mouth.
You ask questions, I give you an answer.
Just listen to what I got to say and then I'm asking, Tony, this question. I don't ask you. If I'll ask you, then you answer. If I don't ask you, shut up. All right? Just that simple.
Be civil.
So at the end of the day, let's say Westmore Engineering sent you a bill. Where's it go?
Are you talking, and this is, you're confusing me. Are you talking about day-to-day, what things are being done? Are you talking about the big overall project that's going on in the city? Because that's two different things.
The big project.
Okay. They have engineering that they do. Be happy to shut. Matter of fact, it's right here. Right here. Here's their billing. Here's their layout, what they've done.
Where's it go? Where's that bill go?
The bill comes to us.
And then from you goes to where?
Well, we write a check. We approve.
We approve it, it goes to USDA.
USDA. And USDA has to approve it. We just don't approve nothing.
I thought it went to PennDOT.
PennDOT, PennDOT was phase four and we're finished with that project.
Okay, so that project.
Penn Vest, excuse me.
Yeah, there's nothing to do with PennDOT.
Well, it won't point to work. No?
No.
Okay, so let's, let's go your route. I just trying to understand how it goes. Then it goes from the city to who?
USDA.
USDA, they sign off on it.
And then?
And then we go ahead and pay it from there.
Now, when you say we go ahead, does the bank pay it or you guys pay it?
The bank.
The bank pays it in a sense, but we authorize it.
It comes out of the credit, line of credit, correct?
We have an interim loan with PNC Bank.
I'm asking him a question. When I ask you a question, I'll, I'll ask for you.
He's gonna know more day-to-day, so we'll give, let him talk on some of that seriously because.
I wanna know from you, Tony, because you, you handle the money and it's, I'm not trying to, you know, to try to catch you in some kind of a trap. I just wonder how it works.
It goes to USDA.
Okay.
And from there, we sign off and pay what they authorize the work to been done.
Okay, I'm gonna take that as an answer from you. Are we behind on any bill like the Orange J construction guy? Are we behind that we haven't paid him maybe in a month or two months or three months?
We shouldn't be behind on anything unless something was overlooked, which happened last month. There was a, that was that one bill that we missed. There was, shoot. It was something on the project and I can't remember what it was. It was thirteen thousand dollars, wasn't it? I'm trying to remember.
I could, maybe it was the number fourteen invoice.
Yeah, it was it. Yeah, it was one of the invoices we missed.
Do you have any, okay, go ahead.
We should be current. We should be current on everything. And I mean, everything.
Do you have any bills that you oversee that, for instance, they're over thirty days or sixty days late on paying?
I know all our bills.
They're all paid?
Yes, sir. Especially after tonight.
How do we get a copy of those paperwork? Cause they're all paid out today.
You should be able to provide that. That's public knowledge.
Yeah, I know it is. I like to have that. That, that goes from the Orange J, from Burgess Town to WW, what is it? Westmore Engineering, W E. And anybody else that worked there, see if we owe them any money or they haven't been paid for projects that are done and they're over thirty days late.
Tony, this councilman, Ochakowski, would you authorize him to have?
Yeah, of course. That's not a problem at all.
Peanut? That's this month.
It's top secret now.
No, no.
It's not top secret, Ernie.
Appreciate that. I have, I mean, I, I'll come back to that sometime, you know, once I read this and see what's what. Uh, the other thing that was interesting to me, by the way, I do like the presentation that you make. I just hope you don't get corrupted with this people. That's all I'm telling you. So here's the next thing that I wanted to ask. I still like to see you guys make a motion for the city of Menneson, for the fire workers, the firemen, to get a tax-free, at least a five hundred or a thousand dollars for firemen so we could recruit some people. I brought that last month. I'm bringing it again, number one. Number two, we had a policeman that just retired, correct? We got more cars than we got cops. We need to hire policemen.
We just hired one tonight.
One, but one haven't quit.
Okay.
All I'm saying. Number three, City Hall needs people, the work in this building and in the city, you know, and the, the city workers, they need to hire some people to fulfill their job and you guys ain't doing it. But you give tax-free to other people for doing another damn thing and that's wrong. That is wrong, but you guys shouldn't have to waste on putting up five hundred or a thousand dollars to each fireman that signs up. And I, last time you guys said, you know, we're not, we gotta talk about it. Okay, you had three weeks to talk about it. Have you come up with anything?
Not yet. It might be. I don't know how many of the firemen actually have property tax to pay though. How many of them are renting and so forth? I don't know. Most of them are young.
Well, we give everybody else tax-free.
Who do we give tax-free? Tell me, tell me. Name one.
People that pay no taxes and they, they're, they're, the places that they're tearing down, they're still a little twenty and thirty thousand dollars worth of taxes. Those, those are the people that get the free ride.
Those people are typically dead, moved out of this country.
That's what you say. I think you're dead.
Not all, but they're.
I said, I think you, all I'm asking you, real simple, hire some city worker. I watched a city worker the other day, last week. Bust their ass. On Ninth Street, on the Ninth Street Park, cutting trees down, the whole crew, while everything else was getting neglected because they can only, they only have so many. You know? When are you gonna hire somebody? Okay, and then that's the three items, cause I brought them last and I'm gonna bring them every damn month.
Okay, thank you.
No, I'm not done.
Okay.
Okay. I know the newspaper or the fake paper gives you a write-up right before the meeting, cause that's fake news. I don't read it. I get called on it.
So how do you know?
I get called. Somebody called you, did you read it? I said, no. Cause it, to me, is trash. To you, it's, you know, they put your mug in there and you think you're good, but I think I seen my dog looks better than you do. And I got a Yorkie. Well, let me, let me say something. Out of those people that you put in, in your new committee, cause this is about the tenth committee that you have already, you have the Mia Maya group, you got a whole bunch of committee. You went to Carnegie Mellon. You went to Carnegie Mellon. You went everywhere. Now, there's new group that you got. I just want you to know that I know, okay? You got the guy from Cle- uh, Cleveland Cliff. Okay, one, right? The Illumina Source, two, right? The Superintendent of Menneson, right? Well, he should dedicate his time to the school.
That's right.
To the school, cause that's who needs help. The school needs help. They need books. They need computers. They need food.
And students.
Okay? No, don't get him, don't get him by coming to, by tying his money. Let me, let me finish. The three people that I know, they're not from town. They're all out-of-towners. They, you got Cleveland Cliff pays, what, ten thousand dollars, seventeen thousand dollars a year? So he could, they could pollute us? Is that a good thing? Okay, and then you have the Illumina Source. I don't know where that guy's from. I don't have the ideal. I know he can be from Menneson. Okay, and then you got the Superintendent of Menneson. And then, of course, you got your preacher, cause he's almost like God to you, but he needs to tell you to tell the truth and be transparent and you're not. You do things behind people's back every time. You can't be trusted.
That's why I put it in the newspaper and put this on Facebook and YouTube.
You can't be trusted. You can't be trusted. That, that's all I'm telling you. And you only have two people there from Menneson that sits on our board. Okay, and the one is Jeff Embrodi from Douglas Business School. And the other one is Russell Johnson that owns the Steel Plate. They're one of the only two people from Menneson to sit on the board.
And he didn't go to the meeting?
Okay, so he gets all his meetings going, but he can't deliver nothing, cause he lies. He's in a, he comes to a redevelopment meeting.
Let's not get into insults.
Okay, let me finish. He comes to the redevelopment meeting that I, that I play a part in, that I go in and see and he pretends nothing's going on. Meantime, he does not, that's the reason I told you, he does not run the city. He's like a stooge. They tell him what to do. He doesn't know the people that they, he appoints.
So get back to things.
They know they're not even from town. Let me speak.
No, no, you've, you've spoken now for ten minutes.
So what? You speak for twenty and say nothing? So what the hell is that?
Well, that means that they elected me to.
The only place, look, I don't have, I don't have, I don't have no kids to work for the city of Menneson. I don't have no kids. They're attorney. I don't have no kids at all. But the city, the newspaper tells them what a great guy this guy is, because they run the show. And the people that work for the city, including the firemen, your girls, the police, the whole bit, get the shaft every damn time.
Okay, come on, let's wrap this up.
How about you wrapping it up and me? Pack your bag and get the hell out of here.
Wrap it up.
Okay, that's what I could tell you. So you got two people from Menneson that sits on the board. I don't have a problem with them guys because.
You made that point several times.
So what? You say a whole bunch of crap, don't mean nothing for hours, hours. You come here seven o'clock in the morning and I know what you're doing and it ain't nice and I can't say it. Okay, but all I can tell you, man, go to your newspaper, get your editors, cause they don't put their name. That is a fake newspaper and do not advertise in it.
Any other public comments? Okay.
Donald Gregor, fourteen twenty-eight Graham Avenue, Menneson, PA. Long time no see. Didn't think I'd be back this quick. But I have several things. So, page three H, motion to permit advertising for the position. City clerk in the city of Menneson with the position to be filled on or about April first, two thousand twenty-four. That is a terrible slap in the face to an individual that came into this city and straightened out the mess that was created. When I took office in two thousand twenty, the insurance for the employees, we'd been moved into a self-insuring policy that was gonna cost the citizens over an estimated three hundred thousand dollars extra over the course of that contract. This woman went and she looked into all this. She got different quotes, different prices, and we straightened the mess out. This is a terrible injustice. You don't have to pay any attention to me. But what was done here, this is basically stabbing an employee in the back.
She's more than welcome to apply again.
That's not the point, Ron, and you know it.
It is the point. Council has the ability to.
Council can do whatever they're going to do.
They can. We do. We look at our engineer.
I'm not done. You're taking my time. I'm not done.
Okay.
What you did was wrong. What you're planning to do is wrong. This woman has fought for this organization, for the city of Menneson for three years plus. She's straightening the mess out.
And I think her for it.
Yeah, yeah, right. And the way you thank people is do what you're going, you're going to do. I know what's going to happen. Anybody with a brain knows what's gonna happen. And you'll sit there and you'll have your vote and you'll do as you're told, because it's, excuse me. Don't interrupt me. I'm not done. You're gonna do as you're told. You're gonna vote as you're told by a certain individual and we all know who he is. The last two years, this has been nothing but a hostile work environment towards this woman. Has she made mistakes? Absolutely. Who doesn't when you're trying to do things? This is despicable. Especially for the women to have voted for this. I've never seen an organization like this city that treats women employees the way you folks do, the way you talk to them, the way you tell them things. Like if Councilman Ochakowski tells you to jump, ask how high. That has been said. Trust me.
Okay.
I didn't like to come down here and say this. It should not be necessary. This is, this, you're despicable. You're despicable. Now, I'm done with that.
Okay.
Why are we letting people dump garbage up at Columbus Park?
Hopefully, we're not.
We are.
I'm not aware of it.
You should be aware of it.
I should be, but I'm not. I don't go up to Columbus Park every day.
Well, no, no. Somebody does. Somebody should be up there. I took, I took Karen for a ride the other day and we went up to the soccer fields. There's a junkyard up there. Where has our code department been?
He's been cited multiple times. It's in the court system as we speak.
Then why, then why is he dumping his stuff at Columbus Park? I'm not gonna mention any names.
I'm unaware of that he was dumping stuff at Columbus Park. Have you been up to Columbus Park recently?
Yeah.
Is there a dump up there?
Oh, yeah. And it says, no dumping.
There's a sign up there that says, no dumping and there's all kind of dumping going on.
We need to get that addressed.
Clippings done or?
No, garbage, buildings. Buildings, oil filters, automotive parts. The guy drives right up the road, someone stops and says, hey, what you doing?
And that's coming from that place over by, by Shawnee.
Uh huh.
Well, we need to look into that. Absolutely.
Maybe we should get the media to look into that.
Absolutely.
Where is the media?
People, you know, when I see stuff like that, I will, I will show up and I will have chats with you.
Well, please do.
And it's not tolerated. Should not be tolerated.
Okay.
I have a couple of other things, but I'm, I'm late for my grandson's, a dinner with my grandson, so I'm gonna leave you with that. But what you've done here by posting this position, you should be ashamed of yourselves. You should be ashamed of yourself.
Don, you really don't wanna go there.
I, I will go there.
Then you're, then you're hypocritical.
I'm not hypocritical.
You're a big hypocrite. You know why?
I know exactly what you're gonna say and we straightened that mess up. We.
What were you gonna say?
Never mind. Doesn't matter. I'm not gonna mention names because I'm not going to.
You mentioned my name, so please.
No, I'm not gonna mention.
You're gonna back it up, back it up.
No, no, I'm not gonna mention that individual's name because I'm not. But yes, I did fire people. And we had a mess straightened up. I fired that guy right there and he knows why I did it. And I'll be honest with you, the last year, two years has proven to me that he is a superb lawyer.
That's why we hired him back.
Yeah, but before that, he made some mistakes that I felt couldn't be allowed to stand.
You're entitled to that opinion.
That wasn't my opinion. It was the facts.
I don't know. There's a difference of opinion.
There's opinion and that's.
That's.
We're gonna let that.
We'll let it go, Joe. But I've, I have changed my opinion about you. And before that, I had my differences with you and your law firm.
I understand.
However, with what this woman has done in the last three and a half years to do this, shame on all of you. Have a good evening.
Mayor, may I continue with this conversation?
You can go over there and speak too, yes. You can sit there, you can sit.
You got a microphone right in front of you, Rosalie. She doesn't have to come down here.
She's all right. Never mind.
People have gone and said about bringing women. You could have had an elderly woman walk over you.
The first thing I wanted to say is, this is in regards to advertising for the city clerk. I have a list of all of her. I have a list of all the job duties that she has. I'm not gonna read them all and this is basically what she does. Plus, there's whatever the council asked her to do, she's supposed to do also. But in the meantime, if anybody wants to see this, it's available.
Oh, I do.
Okay, the other thing I wanted to say is, in her defense, she has enhanced the totals for the city with the finances of the city. In the meantime, her suggestions to council on changing health insurance programs saved the city five hundred thousand dollars. In the meantime, her suggestions to council on changing health insurance programs saved the city $500,000.
Wow.
Her assistance to council with negotiations for the police and the AFSMI union contracts helped give our employees a competitive wage and still saved the city money. The city's future obligations to our retirees dropped 15 mil, $16 million because of her suggestions to change the healthcare and union contracts without making any changes for our existing retirees. She uncovered mistakes that saved the city $250,000. My question is, does this sound like a person that we should be replacing?
No.
No.
And like I'm saying, I'm gonna start protesting about that, that's not right. And I like to know what was said to her to make her quit. That's right.
She hasn't quit.